Missy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. When they start presenting, feel free if you have something to add, just flag us down.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you.
We'd like to call this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission to order. It is August 7th at 7:00 P. M. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Commissioner LaSalle?
Present.
Commissioner Masiass?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Dorian?
Commissioner Dorian is excused.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Here.
Chair Banaschinsky?
Here.
Now, please join me for the flag salute. We will now have a land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that the city of Kenmore is situated upon the ancestral lands of the Snohomish, Snoqualmie, Sox, Huaqal, Duamish, Stilagwamish, Tulalip, Suquamish, Makalshut, and other tribes who are part of the Coast Salish peoples. We recognize and express our deepest respect for their enduring stewardship and profound relationship with this land, which they have cherished and protected since time immemorial. We honor the first peoples, acknowledge their vibrant cultures, and commit ourselves to learning from their wisdom in our journey to promote justice, equity, and mutual understanding. We pledge to stand alongside these communities in acknowledging past injustices and working towards a future that respects and celebrates the diverse heritage of this land.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone signed up for public comment?
Uh, we did have one virtual signed up, but she is not online, so I believe we could go ahead.
All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda.
I move the consent calendar.
There's a first, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda passes unanimously. And that brings us to the next agenda item, which is Chapter 6 of the Prose Plan.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Uh, we have Tom and members of his team here this evening to continue the discussion of the Prose Plan. And before we get into that, just sort of a, a quick overview of the framework for these discussions. So, we are updating the Prose Plan, uh, because it's a requirement to have that done every six years to be eligible for grants. The Prose Plan has a, a larger level of details than what you typically see in the prose element of the comprehensive plan. The prose element of the comprehensive plan has the goals, policies, objectives, and implementation measures. We also will be developing a new, uh, capital facilities plan related to parks, which provides a new 20-year list of parks' capital projects, uh, with an estimate, an estimate of what that will cost and how that can be funded. So, as we continue over the next few weeks, the discussion of the Prose Plan, um, what Tom and his team have been doing is collecting a lot of data to see what has changed, whether that's demographic data or data related to activities. And Tom has explained that to you, what he has seen in some of the trends. Also taking a look at the city's assets in terms of parks and recreation. What is out there? Uh, what does that look like in terms of how that meets the future needs? So again, taking all that data into account then is now figuring out what does that mean? What are the implications of the data that has been collected? Um, what has changed, um, since we did the last one? And looking forward, what do we need to be able to do to best meet those changing needs? And then from that then, you can then develop the goals, policies, and objectives to reflect what needs to happen in the comprehensive plan. And also then, a list of capital projects to meet those needs. So I just wanted to just kind of give you an overview and framework so to help kind of, as you think through, some of the policy questions that needs to be addressed before we get to the point of having a recommendation on the Prose Plan. So now we're going to kind of dive a little bit deeper into parts of that Prose Plan element update. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom and the team. Thank you.
I'm on.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, most of the rest of the team is here. I'll let them introduce themselves to familiarize. Uh, why don't we start with Missy first? Missy?
Yeah, hi, I'm Missy Smith. I am the Arts and Culture Consultant for Beckwith.
My name's Julie Blazek. I'm with HKP Architects, and we're Architectural Support on the team.
I'm Jennifer Cus- Jennifer Cusalis, uh, with JKLA Landscape Architects, and I am the Landscape Architectural Support on the team.
And another member of the team that's not here is Eric Scott, and he's the Civil Engineer. This, all of us did the tours of your existing park sites, and we really want to go over your existing parks and the master plans for those parks tonight, because that does affect what's, what else is within the final document. And the one thing I wanted to start with were your critical areas. There we go. This is your floodways, different colors of blue. The lightest blue is your 500. The next blue is 100, and the darker blue is FEMA. What we're seeing in a lot of other communities is these are getting bigger with climate change. It doesn't necessarily change the overall pattern, but the volume may be different. And the key issue here is a lot of these lands are regulated. They can't be developed, so they're not available for urban use. Can you take me to wetlands? All right, these are the considered, okay?
These are landslides.
Landslides. Um, the very light color is the hazard area, seismic hazard area. The next color is a high landslide hazard area, and then last color is a moderate. What we're really interested in is the high landscape, high landslide area, primarily from steep slopes, as well as the underlying soils. But most of those are within ravines, and they're heavily wooded, and they too cannot be developed. Then if you've looked at any aerials of the city, you can see that most of them are tree cover, left in the natural state. And the last are wetlands, the green, green areas. Same thing with this issue. They are also critical area, and they cannot be developed. And the reason I wanted to point this out is when we're looking for the natural areas, you don't need to buy them to protect them. They're protected. They're not going to be developed. The reason you would look at acquisitions if you want to have public access to them, or you want to do other activities on them. And then you don't necessarily need to consider buying the whole property. You may look at buying a quarter, or getting an easement for quarter, or getting a development agreement for that. So we didn't want you to think that everything that I've just shown you has to be publicly purchased. Okay, if we could go to Chapter 6. See why I have my tech wizard here. Now, this is Chapter 6. In Chapter 6, we usually have a, a profile of every park, what exists and what's potential to it. So this is a list not only of your parks, but everything that's within your city limits. So let's go to Linwood Park, first one. The light, the light yellow is the property boundaries. This is what's, uh, currently owned. Uh, and you can see your existing improvements are an open play area, two picnic tables, and a playground. There's no master plan for this park site, and that'd be one of the issues. Uh, and maybe that you've developed it out, and you're completely satisfied with it, but nonetheless, that needs to be confirmed. We are not proposing to add anything additional to this site we think is pretty well-developed out. Next, please. This is North Shore Summit Park. The existing improvements include a wetland, the wooded areas, the 2.5-mile gravel walking path. I think that may be paved by now, isn't that right? An open play area, two picnic tables, and a playground. The master plan was done in 2013, and the question is, is it fully developed out? Are there any other activities we would consider on it? Next, please. This is Wallace Swamp Creek Park, and the master plan was done in 2006. The things that we identified that have been done is that wetlands and the woodlands have been defined. You have water access for fishing. You have a trail that allows dog walking. You have a pedestrian bridge over Swamp Creek. You have open play area, four picnic tables, and a parking lot. And the things where we're not sure have been developed that are on the master plan were install interpretive signage and information, construct a secondary trail to the school, construct a picnic shelter, install a natural material play area, install portable restrooms, expand parking area, continue to work with the volunteer group for invasive species removal, and then complete an update to 2006 master plan. Now, this property was acquired with Conservation Futures. And one thing I can, I need to clarify about Conservation Futures. If you bought it with those funds, you cannot have active recreation on it. But you can swap a part of the site for an equally comparable site if you choose to do so. So if you, could you go to the master plan for Wallace Swamp? It shows at the northeast corner of the property where the parking lot is. That's it.
This is it.
All right, at one time must have been improved. It says public ball field and other activities. I don't, we don't know whether that was from a previous master plan, or that's a defunct space. But we think that particular corner, which is above the wetlands, and in most cases, open area, is a potential swap. Now, when you do swaps, you have to set, as I said, a comparable and equally, uh, quality site. That doesn't mean you can go anywhere in the city and pick a property and say, "We want to swap for that." But if you were to expand the boundaries of this, or be close to the boundaries, and pick up more of, say, Swamp Creek's, uh, area, then you could consider swapping that piece. And if you did, the only reason you would want to do that is that's the one piece within that whole site that's potentially usable for any kind of active recreation facilities. Next, please. This is Wallace Swamp Creek Park. That was Wallace Swamp Creek Wetland.
There we go.
And, um, this one doesn't show all the property boundaries on it, but they're scattered, and you've been acquiring more, which is, which is fine. The issue that, what we would potentially want to see through here would be, um, the Swamp Creek Trail. And you would probably want to alternate it back and forth along the stream, so you're not right on the creek all the time. And that would probably determine what you may buy more of, or what you may look for, uh, potentially easements for trails and those kinds of activities. Jennifer, do you want to say anything about this site?
Um, just, there's a lot of sensitive areas out there, so if you were considering, um, putting in a trail system, you may be looking at doing a boardwalk system as well to kind of have less impact on, on a sensitive area like that.
And that would include the toll pipeline, which runs right across the mill. How would you handle that?
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna let Commissioner LaSalle go ahead.
Thank you. Just a question to clarify. Is, is the picture from the Swamp Creek wetland? It, it looks a ton like the Tawaris Park picture. So just, I mean, it's fine. It doesn't impact what's said, but just for consistency, uh, i- is that, is that the same park we're talking about?
That picture is from Tualcati's Park at the top.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Did you, was there anything else you want to say about the pipeline quarter?
After the pipeline quarter, then we'll have Commissioner Vanderlin.
For Swamp Creek or any other area where we wanted to add something like a trail or a boardwalk, what are there, what other requirements from, for instance, Department of Ecology or others for approvals? And that, would those approvals be of changes to the master plan?
Um, I'll have Jennifer answer a little more detail, but essentially, um, you can develop trails through these kinds of wetland areas. The question would be, are you, are you, are you adhering to the buffers, and are, and what kind of trail improvements are they?
Uh, typically, typically, they like to see, um, trail systems within the buffers. They do allow for that. If you do need to, to cross over a wetland itself or a sensitive area, you would definitely need to work with the Department of Ecology. There are an awful lot of, um, analysis that need to be done before you venture in as part of your master planning process, having environmental scientists go out and map the wetlands for you and the buffers and categorize them, so.
Okay, any other questions on this site?
Commissioner Olson?
I think there has been, uh, there was a study at one point, look into putting a trail through this site, if I'm not mistaken. And if I recall, it was a boardwalk option. Um, pretty expensive, but not surprising, given the wetland mitigation that would be required, um, for an area like this. Something I've been wondering about is looking at a trail, potentially not directly through this area, but around the creek closer to where the buffers may be, um, which is potentially a little bit different than kind of going straight across where the toll pipeline is, and doing that as part of development agreements, potentially with other folks. Um, just to avoid some of the issues with the toll pipeline and the direct impact of the wetland. There may still be some direct impact, but probably reduce it quite a bit. Um, and then the other thing is grades. Once we get to 80th, I know they're looking at putting bike improvements, and so potentially continuing back towards the toll pipeline on 80th. Um, just something I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I th- I think taking a, uh, you know, a deeper look when you get to the master planning level as to what can and can't be done. Um, of course, you know, with the toll pipeline, you're also dealing with, um, King County and their requirements and, uh, other issues that they may have. And they may push you in the direction of looking at the wetland buffer versus toll line area, but there are options out there, so, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Masiass has a question before we move on. Commissioner Masiass?
Here.
I just had a question on the trails. If we're talking about running trails through these buffers, are we thinking that these are natural path trails, or what is, what's the kind of idea behind that? Or is this gravel? What is, what, what would that look like?
Go ahead. Pull the, pull your microphone. There you go.
More, more than likely, the, the trails, um, would be more of a, uh, I don't know, a bark mulch surfacing, um, but one that's ADA accessible. Uh, some of the, um, uh, like the fiber product that's used for play areas, you, you definitely need to be ADA accessible. Uh, the reason I'm kind of steering away from like a crushed rock is most jurisdictions, King County, uh, consider crushed rock to be an impermeable surface. And you would then have further impacts from that, and it keeps going and going and going, so. Uh, in an area like this where it's, um, a natural area, you're trying to have kind of create a balance between retaining the sensitive area and the wildlife habitat, um, as well as allowing people to enjoy it, um, and get some recreational value from it.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
If we were to decide that, or want to make a recommendation for a master plan on any of these parks going forward, just a process question, would that be included within the objective session, section of the plan? Or would it be included in the plan at all? How do we call that out for the City Council?
If you're doing a master plan for any of the park sites, or updating any of the master plans, that's its own kind of process. Ideally, you wouldn't be looking at things that deviate entirely from the Prose Plan. Uh, but you could rely back on the goals, policies in the Prose Plan if there are things that came up on the, when you're doing a master plan that aren't explicitly listed here. It's open, I guess, is what the best answer for that.
You, you could also include it as, depending when we get to the goals, policies, objectives. If we're talking about different parks and how they serve them, you could also put in a, an objective, or even an implementation measure for developing master plans.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Thanks. Sorry for being this guy, but it's, uh, for, just for consistency, this picture is from Swamp Creek Park, not from Twin Spring, Twins, Twin Springs Park.
Uh, we've defined this as Twin Springs. Do you have a different name for it?
Photo, the photo. I mentioned this one to you. Photo of Wallace.
Oh, the dog?
The dog.
We've, yeah, we took the-
No boardwalk there.
We took the dog out already. We just haven't got a replacement picture. And the updated version of, of these, um, Amanda, the GIS analyst, put in all the proper, um, property boundaries. I think with Twin Springs, you, you do have a master plan. We couldn't find any date on it. And involve, it showed a, a potential lower loop trail that stays down around the wetlands, and then an upper, uh, plateau trail that went up the, up the hillside and ended up at, uh, the sports fields on the top. We think that from what we can tell, most of the bottom-level loop trail has been developed. Uh, but the things that we think that are outstanding is the overlook for the Beaver Pond, the, the upland trails, the stream crossing of the upland trails. And it calls for installing two play areas, one on the bottom south and one closer up to the bo- to the north. And we assume that those would be a mixture of maybe equipment and kind of natural materials, something that fits the site. That would be an issue to decide at the proper design time. All right, any questions, any more questions on this park?
I have a question in general about master plans. A lot of the master plans for our parks are a decade or more older, and I am curious about if master plans ever have an expiration date, if they ever have a date by which you would want to reconsider them, given that community values can change, community needs can change, community demographics change. And do you have any feedback about that? Um-
All those questions are, are open. I think the question is when the master plans were done, we presumed they had community input and, and neighborhood input in and around the sites. That doesn't mean you can't reconsider them. Well, we've taken at value that they're gener- they were generated by some kind of public involvement. And that doesn't mean they can't be updated, or shouldn't be updated. Or that doesn't mean that you can't modify or refine some of the proposals of the original, or even new ideas as they come up.
All, all of that is true, so I guess that's sort of a, a question then, is if, is when looking at the, at the current master plans, and then in terms of what is needed to meet demands, I think you could also then take a look at the master plan and say it's either consistent with the direction that we need to go, or it isn't, or it would, we would recommend revising to better address where we need to be.
Uh, Commissioner Olson, then Commissioner LaSalle?
Um-
And Vice Chair Thompson.
Okay. Um, I'm probably going to sound a little like a broken record, uh, tonight on, uh, trails and biking and that type of thing, um, and walkways. One thing that I've experienced is a tendency to view trails as recreational opportunities. And I find they oftentimes become meaningful transportation corridors. Um, and so something I'd be kind of curious about is looking at the bike plan and the, uh, street plans for the future. I know that there's some improvements happening on 80th. There have been improvements on 73rd, and so I'm looking at this particular park. And it sounds like there was a plan for a high-line trail extending up to ball fields, which I believe are in Bothell, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and I would love to see more east-west connections connecting 80th and 73rd towards downtown, and potentially going up towards Bothell eventually. This seems like, uh, potentially a more feasible spot for a, a connection towards Bothell than, I think the toll pipeline ended up being based off of some of the grading there, although it, it is still quite steep, I'm sure, and, and may be difficult. Um, so that's, that's another thing I'd be interested in is, could potentially like 193rd be improved to connect 80th and 73rd? Or maybe, maybe that's more on our end, I guess, to note for the transportation plan, um, and, and other plans like that. Um, and then, related to this question, how difficult would it be to work with, say, Bothell to try and get a connection from that ball field? So if we have a trail that goes up to the ball field, I'm assuming we would need to work with Bothell if we wanted that trail to continue on and actually connect, um, over to the roadway that direction? Because ideally, eventually, you have a connection that goes towards downtown Bothell as well. Um, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here, just-
You got a number of questions there. Um, first off, your comprehensive plan recently created a pretty extensive bike wait plan, and you've done a, uh, upgraded a lot of your roads with shoulders and so on for bikes and pedestrians. You also have a sidewalk plan in your comprehensive plan, which you don't have in your comprehensive plan is off-road. So we've concentrated more on the off-road connections. That seems appropriate that the trail in the master plan even for Twin Springs ends up at the ball fields. And that's a different kind of trail or opportunity or activity than simply trying to bike through the area to get places. Second, Bothell is one of the most, um, um, active people in our workshop. And that, once we get to the point where we have a draft element, we want to go back to those jurisdictions. Bothell in particular mentioned whether or not that we could join, you could joint venture for a dog park. So there are probably other opportunities that would come up once they see what, what kind of ideas you have. Probably another connection you could make would be to Wayne Park. Probably another connection you could make would be to Wayne Park and how that fits into the bigger picture or not between that kind of trans-city activity. Want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, when you're, when you're looking at trails through the sensitive areas like Twin Springs and Wallace Creek Park, you more than likely are not considering bicycle activity. It's almost strictly pedestrian. There's, the Department of Ecology has issues with bikes and, but you end up with dirt bikes in there and it, it can do a lot of damage. So if there is an alternative route for cyclists, that kind of goes around these sensitive areas, if it's street related or a regional trail like the tollt Pipeline Trail, those are better routes for cyclists.
Usually when you update your master plan or even when you update this plan, you may have trails within parks that are suitable for different users. And you may have some sections of some trails that are perfectly fine for, say, a mountain bike, as long as adhere to the rules. But you don't want things like e-bikes or what's called single track or those kinds of trail type of users because they're not going to fit in your, in the kinds of parks that you have.
Commissioner LaSalle and Vice Chair Thompson?
Thank you. So for me, I think it's more a question of process and understanding the process here because the way I, and I was going to wait until we reviewed all the parks, but some of the elements I want to touch on have started to be mentioning, so I'll do it now. In reviewing these parks, I see that there is essentially three types, or I'm understanding three types of possible improvements. There's environmental improvements, there's what I would generally qualify as beautification improvements, and there is capability improvements, especially if we go down, I think the slide just afterwards, it's the, it's the area just behind City Hall where we're talking about playgrounds and we're talking about potentially a basketball court, et cetera. My issue is prioritizing those with understanding our, what we have and what are the needs, which I know we've, I've mentioned in the past. But for the capability improvements, I, I think for me, it's really important to be able to understand what do we need versus what we have? Because if not, the temptation is yes to everything, even if not necessarily that specific ask or that court is the necessity that we have. And also it has naturally an impact on what I'd call the beautification improvements. Because for example, for Twins Prince Park, I'm not going to be able to say that park's name, I see developed wetland Beaver Pond overlook on paper. Yeah, sounds like an amazing idea. But then I'm going to have to ask Debbie and Todd, how many overlooks do we get to develop for a path? How many paths do we get to develop, trade off for a field or a court or something like that? Obviously, there are going to be trade offs that need to be made. And if we desperately need a court of sorts for a specific type of activity, then we might not be able to develop the other things. So I'm just trying to have a process to prioritize what we need as opposed to what we would like, because I would like a lot of things, but I don't think it's necessarily possible.
A couple of things. First off, these are showing proposed improvements, not maintenance, repair or renovation. But your financial strategy starts out with what does it take to administer, what does it take to maintain, what does it take to repair and renovate? And then it gets into how much can you generate for capital improvements? And then when you're looking at the wish list, if you want, or everything that's in their master planets, how much are willing, are people willing to pay or afford? And what are their priorities? And that comes from the last survey we do of registered voters. And these particular proposals will be the things that that survey would address. Now, keep in mind that sometimes the priorities for what's the greatest benefit versus people that are going to pay the money, whether it's a levy or a bond or a property tax to finance it versus low volume activities like, say, a skate court where they may not help float a bomb, but which we know that there's a need for. And then those become strategic decisions for you to make about how we allocate that.
You're absolutely right. I think my issue, however, is the, is quantifying those strategic decisions. Because if we don't necessarily, I want a pony, okay? I really, really want a pony. And so therefore, we desperately need a pony, using this as a facetious example. But if there's a strategic decision that needs to be made afterwards because we decide, okay, we're not going to have a pony, but what do we have instead? It needs to be based on what the city has versus what it needs and what are the capabilities for each, to use a less facetious example, if we have five courts, five racquetball courts, for example, and there's a huge demand for racquetball courts. What I think is really important to understand is what are other cities, comparable cities having? What is the accessibility for neighboring cities? And is the actual need to go to six, seven, or 15 different courts? If there's a real need for more racquetball courts, but we actually need to go from five to six from a capabilities perspective to serve everyone, then that's a very different prioritization exercise that we'll do than if we need 15. And not having that visibility of what is the need, not, not the, not the spoken need of I really, really want a pony, but the need of we, a city of 25,000 people on average in the area has X number of racquetball courts per thousand people. And we are significantly under or significantly above. That, I feel, is a very important element to consider when deciding that. With that said, maybe Kenmore feels like we want to do specific, we want to over invest in racquetball for strategic reasons. But again, that is a decision that we would make knowing that we are purposefully going over capacity compared to the other cities. Without knowing that, it then very much feels to me like a wet finger approach of, yeah, I like this idea, I'm going to support it, but without having the facts underlying for why we need it.
Keep in mind that you have two plans. You have a 20-year vision, which includes a lot of things that you probably can't afford immediately. Then you have a six-year financial plan that says, what are we going to pay for over the next six years? Which really, you update every year, you do a capital facilities program. We provided you benchmarks already when we gave you that level of service to say, what are comparable communities of your size? But that doesn't restrict you. If your community says we want more racquetball courts, and I think I gave you the example of Lake Oswego, Oregon, where they play tennis and have more tennis courts per capita than anywhere in the world, but they want it and they're willing to pay for it. So that becomes a more normative decision that your community makes about when is enough or when there is not enough about what to do. So we're providing you all those things. 20-year vision, six-year financial plan, based on what the results of the voter survey will be, benchmarks for comparable areas. But in the end, it's going to depend on what your public values and what they want to do.
A hundred percent. In that case, that's maybe on me to not have realized that we had the comparisons with comparable cities. That case may be more a question for Todd and Debbie to orient me towards where specifically that document is. Because I do vividly remember the surveys where we had the, we need more of those. But I do not remember having a, this is what we currently have and this is what neighboring cities or comparable cities have per, let's say, 1,000 or 10,000 people, which would provide kind of a sliding scale of where are the needs versus what are the existing capabilities and where is the gap?
And you have one wrinkle in your circumstance though. You're not an island all by yourself. You've got Bothell sitting on the east border, which is facility heavy, and the same with Kirkland. And then you have Lake Forest Park on the other side, which has almost nothing. So you, you can't draw your city limits and say, what's our balance? You got to take a little bit bigger picture. So if there are plenty of courts and athletic fields right on your border, then you don't necessarily need to duplicate that. And at the same time, if there's a deficiency on your west border and you know they're going to come and use your facilities, then you have to be strategic about how you anticipate that too.
Fully agree. When I mention cities, comparable cities, it, it's more comparable areas of population. And definitely am interested in looking at the area at scale. But again, I don't remember having seen that comparison for a city or for an area of population. And so if that exists, that's awesome, but I just haven't seen it or do not remember it. So maybe that's just on me.
When the level of service text on the, in the draft, which was abstracted and given to you, we think it's more useful to compare yourself against cities of the same size than trying to do a neighborhood city, neighboring cities. Because if we put neighboring cities together and we have Bothell and Kirkland, which are considerably bigger than you and more vested in parks versus Lake Forest Park, that's not really a potentially useful benchmark. That's why we stuck to the population sizes.
Yep. And that makes sense. Again, the, the idea, I mean, I defer to you on what is the comparison that makes the most sense. But the part that I am looking for and that I haven't seen and I think would greatly help our understanding of what is truly needed in terms of increasing capacity is what is, where are we today versus how much should we increase to be comparable to whatever needs to be compared to? Again, if we, if we make a decision to go to 15 racquetballs per 1,000 people, that is a strategic decision that the city can do. But before we do that, we need to know if we are, if we are at five, for example, is five comparable for our population and the access they have in the area? Or should we consider five to be vastly underperforming and we need to be at 10? And then we can go to 15 if we want to, but we need to know is five good or bad kind of thing? The survey only gives us, the, the survey only tells us we're not there yet according to the respondents of the survey. It doesn't tell us by how much we're not there yet.
When we get into the review of chapter five, I think we can go back over those benchmarks on how they compare. The last point I would meet you with though is you may not have the capacity to do certain things. If we're looking at athletic fields, you have Morelands Park, but other than that, you don't have anything within the city that has the capacity or potential for that unless you look at buying some property from Bastier. So that's another factor to keep in mind.
A hundred percent. But at least we'll know, we, we would know what our capacity needs are if we cannot meet them because of the infrastructure or the, the situation of the city. That is, I think, step two in first understanding what, where we need to be.
Okay.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Thank you very much. So first, a very technical question about the writing of this. Is there technical difference between a, asking for a plan revision? I mean, saying it needs to be revised versus updating?
No, not really. And I think it depends on what your proposal to do. The only reason the update is used is you have to update your pros plan, has to be made current.
I'm talking about for the, each park?
No, I think that's a question of whether or not you think the park's property developed or not.
Well, now, Commissioner LaSalle's point, I think, is very well taken. And it reminds me of another discussion that we've had in the, in, on this commission and elsewhere through the community, and that has to do with affordable housing. And when you said that, well, we need to look at what is around us and what is needed for us and what's needed around us, there's quite a bit of disparity amongst probably our citizens of what is needed for Kenmore and what we should be towing and providing our part for the area. I think it's, this is far more complicated than that, but it does come down to money. You know, what do, what are the other cities investing? Investing as well as having their assets, but what they're going to be like in 10 years or 20 years, as well as for us in 10 or 20 years? And that balance, and if you look at what you've got already in some of the demographic printouts that aren't going to be shown tonight, but we've seen before, there's unique characteristics of the Kenmore population versus the racquetball, horse and pony groups. And, you know, facetiously, I will say my wife would love a horse, too. So I'm, I'm right with you. So anyway, that's my concern about some of the discussion about the, what is our role? What do we have to pull as a part of the smaller region? Wanted to point that out from a perspective.
Well, I think that's a good point. That's why one of the issues that the, your pros plan has to look at is social equity. And it's not just are you providing the same playground opportunities in neighborhoods that can afford it versus neighborhoods that can't? But also where are they located? And that sometimes runs against your issue of ratios. There are proper, you may end up having a higher ratio of some activity simply because of barriers and simply because of the nature of the development that you're getting into. So as you densify, you're going to have market rate middle housing and you're going to have some projects that have affordable elements in it. And the question is balance between what is your park plan trying to develop and finance? And what is a proper share for the, for the private market to also pony up?
That's very, that's very true. Thank you.
Commissioner Macias and then Commissioner Vanderlin?
I just have to clarify something because I'm a little confused. So last week, we discussed chapter five, which I was assuming was, was current with Kenmore specific amenities and exactly, I think, Edward, what you're talking about with what's deficient and what's our benchmarks? Am I clear on that? Because we, we see what people, what our benchmarks are between the median and the cities and what we have and what we do not have. And then we know exactly what we're deficient in. So is chap, chapter five is our current benchmark list for deficiencies, correct?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I think exactly what you're looking for, Commissioner LaSalle, is in chapter five. And then my, my understanding is we are looking at the survey requests between what people in our city are asking for and what we are deficient for and where we want to find the middle. No?
Correct. We only, we only gave you the benchmark portion of chapter five last week. But when we did the benchmark, we gave you comparisons against three different totals. Kenmore only, those which were Kenmore plus what's right on your border.
Yes.
And then lastly, we said, what are the, the facilities and ownerships within what we might call your market area? So you could see how you stacked up. You were certain kind, certain amenities, if you want, that you don't provide, but parks and facilities on your borders, they have plenty of. But that probably is the biggest area where we saw gaps for than the indoor facilities for you. Recreation Center was one. And Julian, in a little while, we'll talk about the senior center and the arts and culture. But even there, you're on the borderline for your population size about whether or not you provide them and what they are. So you could have a recreation center that's a fairly modest facility, or you could decide if that's what you want to go. Again, it could be something that draws people from outside their city.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Yes, I'm very glad to have the information that's either in or about to be in chapter five, because I think that's really where we need to be looking to have that sense of where we are today, balancing that against what the survey results are. What I want to be sure of, and we mentioned this at our last meeting, was that we're a very small city. Look at the resources that are available with a city of 25,000 or maybe even someday 30,000. That list that we would be producing, or, and I like your use of the term market area, is going to be very restricted. And so I want to be sure that we go through this, we don't artificially constrain ourselves to the vision of a 25,000 city. That there are options in terms of things we can do, both with existing peripheral parks, peripheral communities, where we can do joint ventures for some of the other options, actually also small, like Forest Park, for instance. We also don't have the resources to do these on their own. And there are things and needs we could probably answer for our city if we were more involved in some kind of a, a joint project with multiple one or more cities. I just want to make sure we don't artificially constrain ourselves as we go into this.
I think that's a good point. Number, number one, though, in 20 years, you're going to be 50,000. And yet, from the workshops we have with adjacent cities, they're also in the same circumstance you are, and they're looking for partnerships. And I wouldn't rule out nonprofit partners. And I wouldn't rule out nonprofit partners or even private partners as well.
Oh, what, what, I have to just add, so when we get to fifty thousand, the demand for services are going to look very different from what they are right now and how we would anticipate that. In a twenty-year horizon, we could probably begin to do that, but I couldn't even begin to imagine how we would scope out the services and amenities that are needed for a Kenmore of fifty thousand people. Your entire density is going to be so different, your housing stock is going to be so different, your population is going to be different. So, yeah, I, I, I think we have to keep that in mind. But I think we could also begin by focusing on that six and twenty year and saying, okay, where are the opportunities out there to think a little bit bigger? It's fifty thousand, but it's fifty thousand over four or five different cities rather than kind of constrain it within our single city Kenmore.
So we beat up Twin, Twin Springs? Let's go to the next park side. Town Square Hanger. We think this is terrific facility, and it looks like you completed most of what you want to do with it. I think the only thing that was pointed out to us is you own the post office or the old post office in the adjacent block. And the only issue would be to extend the amenities, at least the connecting and around it. Any questions on this part? Okay. Now, this, you've built out the skate park component, but the issues that were in your master plan for this was to put a sports cart with basketball and pickleball down towards the city hall. We're not sure that that's, that's the best idea, because that's a different user group. Now, one of the things that we were, we kind of illustrated in the draft of chapter five were pump tracks. And I don't know if you've seen a pump track, but it's a series of hills, it can be dirt or gravel, even concrete. It's designed for younger age kids. And sometimes they're separate, but in Anacortes, for example, they redeveloped the skate court. And in the area where you have green and gravel, they extended the, the pump track into that area, and that dramatically changed the user group. So instead of just teenage kids hanging out, all of a sudden there are families there, there are kids on scooters, there are kids on, on their toy bikes and so on, more effectively using that facility than what it was before. And it's also changed the nature of complaints and graffiti and other kinds of issues. So we would think that it might be a better fit to look at that and keep the age groups somewhat consistent and keep it a more family-oriented facility.
I'd like to-
Do you guys want to add anything to that?
I'd just like to add a comment on this park. I, this park is very well loved and, and very used. There is not really a time that I drive by and don't see a group of lovely teenagers enjoying it. And I have been there with my young child. We used to go when he was a little bit younger, and the teens there were incredibly gracious about sharing the space with him. And I think that that is true generally, that other families have told me the same thing. So I personally feel invested in keeping that space, one that is safe for teens and teens who do like to skateboard, think they need, they need that space, and they have been a wonderful part of our community. Yeah, so I'm not opposed to adding amenities there, but I wouldn't want to add anything that displaced them.
Commissioner Seas?
I, I agree. I think the space for teens is critical. Would we ever want to look at, consider like tenting this area? I know Bothell is looking at that in their skate park to kind of make it indoor/outdoor facility and kind of get a year-round shade. Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think that's a great add into something like this and seemingly less expensive than redoing it.
In Arlington, they covered a portion of it and they put in bleacher seats.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, I, I was just wondering on this one here, when you were mentioning the pump track, were you thinking, for, for using kind of like, I think that existing driveway almost and like lawn area to the south of the skate park was kind of the thought there? And then it would connect in with the skate park to kind of like extend out that area? Was that the thought there? Yeah, I, I mean, I personally would not mind having a pump track. That sounds like a lot of fun to me. But I, I would also agree that I wouldn't want to displace the, the skate park there. And I, I'm looking at that space and is it large enough for a pump track? Or would we need to look at that driveway and some of that other area to make that work well? Which, I'm, I'm not sure if it meets city code. Hopefully it could meet city code if the driveway was gone. I'm not sure, because I know there's another one on one eighty second, I want to say. And then on the face of the building, but yeah, I, I wouldn't mind that at all.
I'll bring, I meant to bring an area photo of the Anacortes. It, it fits in the spaces that you currently have there from where you have the skate court to the grass. And it's not a big, huge facility, but it's well-integrated. So all the skate park elements are there. In fact, it's almost the same size. All that they did was to redevelop the end of it, extend it more or less.
I have it on my other, I have it on my screen and I found it.
So I think the, the question is, is a possibility, but you certainly want, one, you don't want to displace anybody, and I think you want to increase the, the amenities that the teens have for skating. The only thing that occurred to us is, there's one that's on the left there, ribbon for the new pump there, see that? Now, that's a much bigger facility, but the idea is that the pump track and the skate court are an integral feature. And it just seemed to us to be a little more compatible with the user group you're tracking than trying to put, say, a pickleball court in or even playgrounds to that, for that feature, because you had a playground right across the street.
I just wanted to add something, you're, you're concerned about displacing the teens, but the nice thing about a pump track is it would retain the teens' interest and especially those who do BMX riding in, in addition to skateboarding. So it kind of fulfills both ends of the, the spectrum here.
Any other questions on this part?
Commissioner Olson?
Not on this park, but this, bringing up the pickleball and basketball court did make me wonder, kind of around the post office on the other slide, I didn't mention this, but there's paved space over there, potentially using some of that as like an interim court. It might not be, you know, a permanent thing, but potentially a lower cost, better utilization of some of those parking spaces if it's owned by the, the city before there's any major development. Because the kind, I think, kind of, my understanding in that area is kind of limited without doing a lot of development work in some of the private property and parcels around it. But having like a basketball area over there would be nice.
Commissioner Olson, can you say again which parcel you're thinking of?
I was thinking by the post office in that area.
Uh huh.
Just because it's already paved and there's potential. I, I don't know what that parcel looks like off the top of my head, frankly, but I know major redevelopment to put in some other amenities has been kind of, my understanding is somewhat difficult because trying to tie in with the parking lot and other uses around it without redeveloping that entire area. But if there's underutilized parking that is city-owned, no.
There's only a small amount of park, there's only a small amount of parking that goes along with the post office. A lot of it is on adjoining properties. And you also have to consider access as well. But I think, you know, you could either say that site in specifically or more generally, is there, are there opportunities for pickleball courts or other sport courts in parking areas that are underused? That might be one way to approach it.
Yeah, yeah, and, and well taken. I, like I said, I don't know exactly what that parcel looks like off the top of my head. I was just thinking over in that area, having some other recreational activities. It's kind of a lively place and feel like it would add to that to some degree as well. Yeah.
I'd like the idea, too, of temporary activation, so even if it's not a permanent use, to test, test drive some ideas and see how our community responds. Be nice. Yeah. With the skate park property, I think this is something I heard Commissioner Olson say, but I am interested as well in understanding whether that drive is necessary from a safety or code perspective, or if that could be space to activate for people. And then I also maybe, I, I'm also interested in, maybe somebody goes out to the skate park while the teens are there and ask them what they'd like to see there. I would be really, really interested to hear what they think and how they'd like to use the space. And then, yeah, I do, I do actually think that that area is one in the entirety that could benefit from some shade. I have sat in that crushed gravel area and it's really hot when it's hot out. So I don't know how that shade arrives, if it arrives through trees or if it arrives through artificial shade structures, but some shade in that area might be nice, especially because I think that is in one of our heat, kind of heat island areas. And there's a lot of concrete around there already. Yeah, those are some of my thoughts on that property. Are there comments or questions on that? Oh, yeah, Commissioner LaSalle?
Just in terms of details to, to, to this area, I think something to consider, if, I love the idea of the pump track, we just would have to think about access, because normally the skate park is not meant for bikes. It currently is, but if there's a reason for them not to be there but have their own track, might be interesting. But in any case, would be interesting to see if we can fit some more benches, because often parents who would bring their younger children to the skate park have to sit on the little rectangles to, to, as the only sitting means when they're waiting for their kids to finish. So, so just something to consider.
Now, we are going to try to do, survey your middle and high school kids that live in the area in September, if we can get the school to cooperate, and that should give us some idea about what they use, what their ideas are. Log Boom Park, it's a beautiful park and it's completely built out from what we can tell from the 2018 master plan. The only issue that we heard was that the pier was too high for kayaks. And we know that there's a kayak launch up by the Bolt Rental, but one of the master plans shows a floating temporary platform at the south, at the far end of the pier for launches. So we're not sure just exactly what the status of that proposal is.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Sorry, is, is that a question for us?
That's a question for you, yeah.
Okay. How do you suggest we know the answer?
Oh, I think there are two questions we had. One, is it necessary? Because if there's a lot, hand-carried launch by the Bolt Rental building, that may be sufficient, depending on, on who uses it. If there's a demand to have that floating platform at the end of the pier, then how much use is it going to get? Because you know the complaint is that the pier's too high. Jennifer, do you want to add anything to that?
I can just say that, that I think we still do this, but there is a seasonal float that goes in, I don't remember my north and south, not at the end of the pier, kind of more at the landward side of the pier, and it goes in seasonally where you can then launch. It's not ideal, but there, there is an opportunity that other than launching off the, the beach at Log Boom. But yes, it is high, it's a very old pier, and it's located within a DNR easement.
And the only question we had is the current launch is pretty close to the swimming beach, whether or not that there's any conflict from that.
Right, other, I say, other than the seasonal float which gets installed, I believe, from like May to September.
Okay. This is a beautiful park.
Commissioner LaSalle? And then Vice Chair Thompson?
Anecdotally, I don't think that there is an issue, from what I've seen, between swimmers and people on crafts, paddleboards, kayaks, et cetera. I think that the, the main issue is the bacteria blooms more than anything from a swimming perspective, which we obviously can't address. But for the kayaks, yes, at the end of the pier, there is the ability to go a bit lower down. So I am not an expert kayaker, so we'd have to ask those who are. But there does seem to have, both at the beach and at the end of the pier, infrastructure to get lower than from the absolute top of the pier.
Vice Chair Thompson?
So I have a technical question of staff, and that is, who owns the pier?
We own the pier within a DNR lease area. We don't own, we don't own the, the land that the pier is constructed on, so that's why we have to lease, there's a lease area that goes along with the pier.
Okay, so the map that I see down on the master plan map, the dotted line seems to end halfway down the pier, not into the area where the ten spots are and the potential kayak canoe access would be. In addition to that question, or shall we say, just leading from there, I'm slightly concerned, as I'm sure our city attorney may be concerned about our liability out on the end there. That pier is not, I'm sure you all have walked it, and the pier is not the greatest pier. And then another issue that does happen is we have power boats that, that go by rather close to that pier. And even though they're in a no-wake zone and they get up to five to eight hour and a pretty good wave, and I, it worries me about the kayak launch that far out. Now, maybe I'm just bringing stuff up, but I, I have been out on the lake a lot over the last thirty years, and that always seems to be a very interesting part of the lake. And it's barely shallow, too. Different issues out there, and so that's why I'm bringing it up. The feasibility issue is my concern, and the liability issue is second concern that some other folks higher than us will worry about.
All right, at this level, I mean, we're not going to get into a detailed feasibility analysis for any proposed improvements. It's at a very conceptual, high-level proposal. If any of these projects move forward, whether it's proposing an additional kayak launch on the pier or any other project, that's when you would get moved from a high-level conceptual further along in design to eventually you get to the construction plans. But we're, we're definitely not going to get to that level in here. But it is good to note, to, to consider that if we do go down that route, some of these problems we would need to address in terms of ownership and liability and accessibility and all the other things we'd have to consider.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Well, lingering for a minute on the high-level conceptual plan, we've got a six-to-twenty year horizon here. What do we think the useful life of that pier is?
Probably not twenty. It would have to be retrofit, and the question would be, what kind of pilings is it on? If they're creosote, they're going to have to come out.
Sixty-year horizon, do we, about replacing that pier or does someone have to be, depending upon who actually owns it or owns what sections of it or what land it's on?
I've got master plan for that, and let's see if we can determine where the boundaries are. There are two versions in there. I think they're very beginning. Yeah.
This one first?
Yeah.
So if you, if we're looking at this master plan, the um God, my eyes, it says phase two, that does not exist. So that's to the left of the pier, it says phase two, it's looked like there's another facility there. That does not exist currently. The cost of replacing that facility would be millions. And it would take a long time for permitting. It would involve every agency and permit that you could possibly think of. So there are safety inspections that occur for the pier. Uh, I can find out more how that is done from the Public Works Department. So it's not that we're not paying attention to the condition of the pier or we do have, you know, insurance requirements for facilities. So we are doing what we need to do to make sure that that pier is um safe and accessible.
Yes, and I don't need to infer that we're not being doing what we need to do here. But within, again, a six to twenty year time horizon, seems to me that we're putting together goals, policies and objectives and going from that, a capital plan. I I think that's something we need to be thinking about because I absolutely agree that cost of this and whoever bears it would certainly swamp Kenmore's capital budget for millennium. So I guess my question is, do we need to, is there, is it appropriate to add this uh to our pros plan?
In your financial strategies, we set aside a certain percent of your existing asset value for repair and renovation, for repair and replacement really. But I don't know that we get specific to different facilities at this point. Debbie, do you wanna?
I, we're gonna have to think about this some more. I think we we probably all agree that the pier is a great asset, it gets you out on the water in a different way. Um, the issue is going to be, um, I mean, you could, it, you can always put things in here as to, as to, you know, consider um a project to improve accessibility, which is something less than complete replacement. Or you can have a policy which is in there is, you know, to assess uh the viability of the current pier and cost for replacement. So there are ways to tackle this without sort of committing that the city is going to replace the pier in the next six years and how we're going to find those millions of dollars. So I would say this is one of those projects which is a huge, huge project, but maybe there's a way to kind of ease into this in a way to sort of recognize that there might be a long term need to replace it. But in the meantime, we should continue to do what we're doing in terms of assessing maintenance and safety, potentially look at a a smaller project for improving accessibility. Um, so things like that, you can, you can kind of look at it that way. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Debbie. That's, that's really what I'm looking for, is some kind of acknowledgement within our pros plan that we need to have an assessment uh of what it's going to take, timing and whatnot. So we can begin to begin that work rather than wait for, wait. But I think a goal, uh, assess uh the replacement over the next six years to twenty years would be, I'd like to see, just so we have some acknowledgement of that and potentially we'd be able to begin work on that.
Commissioner LaSalle, Vice Chair Thompson, and then Commissioner Olson.
So I ju- uh, as we're transitioning away from the initial, from the previous document and going into the uh final master plan, and I know that we probably will revert to the other document afterwards. Uh, I just wanna understand the investment of this commission into the master plans because um they are non-representative of the existence of the plan. They are, uh, they have some features which are potentially aspirational and they have some features that exist today that are not represented. So for example, Log Boom Park is open, uh, I can see uh an area with an overlook in picnic shelter. The picnic shelter is actually not located there. So the documents was made in two thousand and five, there's no expectation that it would be current. But before we review them in depth and without having a scheduling associated with them of phase one is expected to be here, phase two is expected to be twenty twenty seven, phase three is twenty twenty, thirty five, I don't know. Uh, just wanna understand the value that we can provide to the document because as it stands, this is a artistic interpretation of Log Boom Park, relatively accurate but not fully accurate. And we could spend the next three evenings debating on where is each thing and what should we develop and when. But I feel as though that would not be the best use of everyone's time here. So just wanna know, is the objective to review those and comment or just review them and include them in the pros plan? Just, just wanna understand how these documents play a role.
I, if I, I'll answer that. Um, I I think the reason we're looking at these is just to establish what is existing and what isn't at this point.
Okay, but since I just mentioned, the this master plan is not a representation of what is and is not necessarily a presentation of what would be. And so we can talk about, oh, it it looks pretty, but it is not, it is not accurate nor is it a future projection. So just wanna understand, should this be a guidance material or should these be revised before being discussed?
These master plan examples are not in your pros plan. What's in your pros plan is an aerial and a list of what exists and then a list of what potentially could be added. So we don't want to be married to the previous illustrations.
Okay.
But I think that what the open question is, is is what's there and what maybe or not should be considered in the future.
Okay, uh, perfect. Thank you for answering my question, in which case I defer to my previous statement of in order to understand what there could be, I need to have a updated version of chapter five to understand what what is needed versus how, to to understand what could fit or not what could fit, but what should fit.
One of the disclaimers on the front of the chapter five is it says that what's in here are conceptual ideas, subject to further feasibility studies, discussions with neighbors, discussions with the community. So they're, we wanna make very clear their concepts, not not documents to expect to go out and build them on.
No, of course, but uh again, uh, chapter five, based on our discussion, is supposed to guy, my understanding of what you said for chapter five would get, guide us on, this is what's being asked, this is what exists and here are the gaps and quantify those gaps. And therefore, I think that is a very important input document when we're talking about what we could have for the parks. Because, yeah, having, for example, I'm gonna pick on the picnic shelter because I know it's not there. Uh, that picnic shelter looks amazing, is that needed? Or could we have uh something else, uh, I don't know, pickleball court next to it instead? Uh, because we desperately need more pickleball, I don't know. Uh, but so ag- again, we need that input document before we can comment. Or a- again, I'm I'm pretty sure we can come up with very creative ideas on what we could fine tune and refine the master plan to look like to apply to what it could like, look like in the future.
The essence of chapter six is to say, looking at your existing parks, I mean, how best can they be used? But chapter five takes your amenities down one by one and says, well, if we want pickleball courts, where are the feasible places they could be considered? And that does lap over into these, you know, park plan proposals. So um, between the two chapters, one way or another, you're gonna address every amenity and where you think it should or should not be considered. And just because it goes into the plan, as I said, as a concept, doesn't mean that you're absolutely a hundred percent committed to it if it proves not to be viable or desirable.
Yeah, sure, a hundred percent. And again, my my, for me, it was just a clarification of understanding the role of these master plans since, again, they are not phased, uh, or at least they don't have years associated with the different phases that are respective that that are indicated here, nor they, do they represent the current or a planned future state of the existing parks they're supposed to illustrate.
Oh.
And I will, I will say for things like Lot, for Log Boom Park, the improvements that are currently there, which are not reflected on this, it was sort of the next level down of plan creation. So it was looking at this and going, this plan says, you know, maybe a picnic shelter, maybe a beach. And those are things which were important, they're included in the uh more detailed design and construction plans for those level of improvements. So the the picnic shelter, the the beach, the trails, the restoration areas. So again, it's kind of that next, so this is, this is basically a guiding document. It's not kind of, you shall build this. It's when you then take it to the next level and you figure out what is it that we are going to build for that park. And again, that's what happened in, when we started on this process of two thousand and fifteen for Log Boom and Talquidies and Rhododendron in terms of building improvements to get access to the water. So we could spend a lot of time kind of updating these and and having, you know, making, I I don't, that's not really necessary. I think it's more a question of the type of facilities and do we have them and if we don't, where should they go?
Totally agree.
I wish I had more money to 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 play around and do that.
By the way, love the pastels, it looks amazing. I'm a big, big fan. Uh, but it's just wanting to clarify uh the, how to make sure that the commission is spending its best time. If if the purpose of this is to be inspirational but not actually directional, in this case, I I would suggest that we spend very little time on those because they are one interpretation, but there's, there's six people here and more on this side and we all could have our own interpretation of each park.
Vice Chair Thompson and then Commissioner, Commissioner Olson?
Uh, a couple, a couple of different things, but uh first, thank you um for your lovely explanation of all of this. But um, the real, this appendix A is actual a part of what is existing today as the master plan guidance, that's all it is, right? But this is a real document that exists in the city files, correct?
Yes, to both of those.
Okay.
Both.
It was in your previous pros plan.
Well, and even before that, when they did the master plan, this is the last, that's why you've said a lot of the master plans need updating to bring them up to where all of everybody in the world and Kenmore would like to see. And I I I I get all that. And then I have a question for Todd. You know that water art there you see in the middle? Is that the fireworks barge?
No.
Oh, okay, I just, I was just checking.
I wasn't here in two thousand and five, so I'm not.
No, again, this was when this was developed, it was an idea floated around to have some art in the water, as is the log boom, neither of those exist.
Oh, I'm just, I I had to, cuz everybody talks about the fireworks. So now, a point of information is that, and cuz we were, and this is all, this is for somewhere notes to be taken. So when the time comes in the future, that we have to think about something about that pier. I I don't know if you know anything else about the waterfront, but the Marina, which is connected to us, is going to have to do a major dredging and they're working on the permits now. And when they do the dredging, they're gonna have to take out that pier that's in front of the Marina, completely out. And it's obviously gonna be a, one, a huge project and two, uh, expensive for the Marina. But my thought is, is if they're gonna go and pull that sucker out and put, you know, and have to have all the equipment there to to replace it and do the dredging, it would seem to me that would be the time if we were to do something, as you would say, a a private, a nonprofit to a city joint, an opportunity where all the equipment's there and we might be able to save some money. So it's just a point of information, that's all, cuz a lot of people don't know about that they have to do that in the next five years or so.
Now, I, are you suggesting that at that time, that when the city would do what with the pier? I'm, I was unclear on the link of what the, you were suggesting.
What is, oh, the link is.
You said Harbor Village are doing a project of dredging and the city could partner with them and and what? What we, what are you asking for the partnership?
They're gonna have to rebuild that pier in front of the, you you see those, those are um actual where the yachts are. There and out in the front of that is another large uh breakwater pier that goes all the way down in front of the other, what's, what's the um the harbor, the, the.
Kenmore, there.
Well, all the way, almost to there, right? And so when they have to rebuild that, that's a major, major, major project. That would be a, just, I was just thinking an opportunity at that moment to save some money cuz we could do some joint um bidding on on uh on the, on, on pure replacement.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And, you know, and the other problem with that, that about cost on our pier is that if even we were to replace the planks, we would have to redo that uh up to salmon standards. And that's not cheap at all. So that's another little.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, so I I had a question um about, I saw something about public mortgage on that master plan document. And is that just more uh like potential public mortgage for like sailboats or that type of thing? Or or would that potentially be looking at um events of some type or an opportunity for like some sort of other public activity? And that would be something that I think would be kind of interesting to keep in this document as a possible improvement for the future with the, with the pier. If there's ever gonna be work done there, if there's some way to, it's too shallow for that, no. Well, he knows that, I wouldn't know that. Um, never mind then.
Water's down and the sludge is there. You've only got maybe at some point or or decent feet run the ground. I've seen a lot of boats, small boats run around. I I'm sorry.
No, no, that was, that was it and that that answers my question on that one, which is, sounds like maybe not, but. Um, and then the other thing I would note, which I think in support of what Dwight was just saying, and I don't know the feasibility of this and I suspect it's quite difficult and may not work timeline wise, but also just environmental impacts in terms of construction. If all that work could happen somewhat close together, that'd be great. But I have no clue what their timeline looks like and I would think public-private partnerships in that way may be difficult, so.
You're not the first asset.
Were, were DNR ALIA monies used for this project at all or do you know?
I'm, I'm sorry, Tom.
Were DNR ALIA monies used for this project or do you know?
For the, for the, for the pier. Uh, the pier was, I could be wrong on this, but historically, I think it had a railroad on there for logging. So it wasn't built specifically as a recreational pier, it's been there for a very long time. So how it was built and what funds were used to build it, I mean, that's a long time ago, so I don't know.
Big deal, historical.
Well, my only point is, DNR has the ALIA program. And if any of their monies are used at all, one of the issues that you need to provide is transit mortgage, temporary mortgage for visitors, and that may explain why their tent slips out there. And they would be a possible source if you're gonna go and do anything to the pier because it's not only over their, over their tidelands more or less, but then. it's not only over their, over their tidelands, more or less, but then they're the most logical source for finance.
Great. I have a question in a different direction. On the page for Log Boom Park, the second bullet point is that it's a swimming beach on Lake Washington. And I, for my own interest, and I think for the public's interest, I would like clarity on whether this is a swimming beach or not. Because I, I feel like there is a definition of swimming beach. And we had this conversation during one of our planning commissions already with Tom. I feel like there's a definition of swimming beach that I'm still not entirely clear on. And I don't know if this beach fits that definition or not.
It's, it's not lifeguarded. I don't think it is. A swimming beach, I know this discussion has come up before. We can follow it with Jennifer Gordon in Public Works. I don't think it is a swimming beach. People swim from it, but does it?
Right.
I know it's a fine line here, but I don't think it is truly a swimming beach like you see at, say, Wanita Beach in Kirkland, which is a swimming beach. It's lifeguarded. There's a, an area, kind of, you know, which is designated as a swimming area. So I, I believe it is not.
All right. Yeah, but it would be great if we could understand that. And perhaps then we could have a conversation about what that means for our community. Yeah, so there's clarity there. Any other, Vice Chair Thompson?
You, you mentioned something about a requirement for visiting boaters to be able to mer, more, 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 somewhere. Did I hear you mention that about DNR? Or did I misunderstand what you said?
DNR's a LISA, ALIA program, pays for waterfront improvements. And when you have any kind of access for boats, transit mortgage is one of the components that they like to fund. So I'm looking at ten slips out there, and my presumption was that that's how some of the money was derived.
That's a good point. And the other I wanted to mention now that you have that other picture up, you can see that outside pier on the marina. And that outside pier is owned by the marina. And right now, they rent spaces by the hour as far as visiting mortgage. And so I was just thinking, something to go in with, with, the city could go in with them to do, have a, you know, use that in common somehow. And then also out there is where the dump out, what do they call those? Where you put your
Oh, sanitary?
Yes, it is right out on the end of that, toward the big white cover there on the right-hand side. Anyway, just a thought.
Are they dredging the whole marina?
Excuse me?
Are they dredging the whole marina?
They will need to.
So they'll take everything out?
That's right.
They'll reconstruct it, probably with concrete piers. You pound down, and then it's sand. And then the, the covering of the, of the pier itself will be a mesh. So there's no shadows underneath. So that's an expensive project.
They're talking, that's what they've been looking at now. They've got a new estimate and everything, because they were going down the wrong road, and they had to go back to the Y and go down a different trail because
Right.
it is exactly as you mentioned, and somebody didn't tell them that.
They dredged the marina in front of the house I used to own in Shelter Bay in McConner. And the area they dredged is about a third of that size. It took them six months. And they did it through the winter, and they had to displace all the boats. So it's a major, major construction project, let alone all the permitting that was required for it.
And it has to be done during a salmon allowance time?
On the off-season, yes.
Right. We've got quite a few parks to get through, and the marina actually is coming up. So I would like to move on to the next one.
Yeah, this, is this the next one? This is the wetlands. The only thing that we thought that did merit this would be potential viewpoints and a trail if that were possible. Now, the, unfortunately, this doesn't show the property boundaries. And the property boundaries actually extend out a bit into the, the confluence of the Somamish River. But then there are breaks between what's owned up on the north part of the site and what's on on the south side. You can see that development there with the tennis court and so on. So I don't know how feasible it is to run a trail through the whole thing, but it would sure be useful, at least to have some viewpoints where you can go out and be able to see and evaluate and appreciate the marshlands.
Commissioner Olson?
Just a question on this one. I'm assuming that basically that entire wetland-like area that's publicly owned is wetland or wetland buffer, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all of it entirely.
Debbie, do you happen to remember when that was acquired by the city and why?
I, I believe we inherited those wetlands at the same time we got Talquidies Park. I want to say 2009, but I can check.
Yeah, thank you. And also, could you, I know this is hard because we don't have the boundaries on the aerial map, but could somebody talk us through where the public access is? It looks like the golf course comes pretty close to the river.
The golf course does get up there, up at the top, next to the boat launch ramp.
Yeah.
Their property does go almost to the river. I don't think it goes entirely to the river or not. Unfortunately, this is the, no, it does not.
So there's a strip between the golf course and the river that is part of the Inglewood Wetlands? I see. And that's, that's where any anticipated access would travel through that little strip there?
Yeah. So there's three property holdings for the wetlands. The north piece extends from the bridge down to just, just above the white buildings. And then there's a parcel in there that they don't own. Then the second parcel goes from the, from the top of the north building straight on out to the river. And then, of course, they don't own the, you don't own the complex and the waterfront that's around those buildings. And then the third parcel is from there clear down to the edge of the development on the south. So they're not connected. They're broken in two places.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Now, this, this is something I just happened to know about because I had a wedding picture out there. So you see what looks like a tennis court?
Yeah.
Now, that is owned by the condos. And so it goes, I think that's what you were talking about. That's the split. And if you look down, there's a boardwalk that goes from the, well, we'll call it the tennis court there, all the way out to that little round water spot. And that is maintained by the condo association. And then everything else is cities. But that's the, that's the issue. And I was, no, you're saying that, that spot of woods, that line of woods is part of the cities up at the top? Yeah, that one.
Yes, it is.
So that means the edge of the fairway is the lot line.
No, there, you own, you own a sliver above that. And you take, well, can I see the arrow?
Right down the middle?
Can I see the arrow on your, on your screens?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So may they suggest
This area right in here you own, and you own all the way up into the mouth of the, of the Somamish River. So if you were to do a viewpoint, you could easily come from the, under, from Rhoadedendron Park, across a boat launch ramp and out in here, and do the same kind of thing they did down here. Separately, you could come up the road here, once I get hold of my hand here, and you could then have a viewpoint out from here if you chose to. But it'd be difficult to pull trail that would connect all those three parcels. And I'm not sure that you would need to, you know, to get that kind of experience.
Might I suggest that if this comes before us again, we have an image that has the parcel boundary lines on it?
We, we've, we had that. We just didn't get it uploaded into this document. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. I don't think we need to sort it all out tonight. And with that, I think we should move on to the next one.
So I'm gonna let Julie take this over. Go ahead.
Well, my part was just about analyzing, kind of taking a look at the senior center portion of this park. Great location, well-used. I think everybody here probably knows there was a comprehensive evaluation of that building done in 2019 that listed several deficiencies. Since then, it appears that some of the heating has been dealt with, new heat pumps for heating and cooling. And it appears that a fire alarm system upgrade was done. But probably some of the more, you know, still very necessary upgrades are more challenging because they deal with accessibility and just kind of the, the condition of the building that would take a major renovation. And it's, it's quite small, as you know. The upstairs is not used at all because of the access to it. And the, the annex building is quite nice. It's, it's on grade, so it's accessible, and it has a nice space for arts and crafts. But the, the existing, you know, original house is pretty chopped up into small spaces, low ceilings, it's cramped. They're doing a great job in there. But it's, it's, it's obvious that, you know, an ideal situation would be a senior center where there was more adequate parking that was accessible from parking to the building. And in this space, the parking competes with the park quite a bit, too, because it's a very, you know, popular park. So thinking about, you know, could there be a plan for a new senior center somewhere? Maybe it's even a renovation of an existing building somewhere else. Maybe it's co-locating another program, you know, historical museum or something where there's efficiency of scale, and maybe finding another use for this building that doesn't rely so heavily on accessibility for an aging population. So those are kind of the key takeaways.
One thing we no longer do is, is try to promote the programming for seniors or teens or adults. The, the most effective thing is our multi-generational buildings. And then you can change the interior and the program for whatever the interest is at that time. Now, I know that the North Shore senior centers operate these, even though you own it. But if you're going to build new facilities, then we would probably suggest you look at a multipurpose, multi-generational facility that can accommodate a wide variety of interests.
Commissioner Messias?
Yeah, I think just for me personally, this one is high priority. I think it should be high priority. We know that we are deficient in indoor facilities. We know that we have a senior center that is inadequate in all things. And looking at the concept master plan, you can swap me down for this and tell me that that's not happening. But there's a botanical garden in Oregon called Leech Botanical Garden that is like a walkway, raises you up and gives you a different sense of space. I don't know if that could be appropriate here or anywhere, but bringing more people into the space. And I love the idea that it's multi-generational, that there's more facilities and that, that connects our seniors to the community. I think that's huge priority.
Okay, before we leave this, could you go to the master plan for Rhoadedendron? We had two master plans for this site. And the only issue is, one of them showed waterfront, trails to the waterfront or waterfront overlook. This one right here, you see up at the top, and expanding the, the rhoady garden itself. And I think there's another one here. This one does not. And so our only question was, there's extensive wetlands up in that area, whether or not that was the reason for the, for the master plan change.
I think this master plan, the earlier one, too, has two options for relocating a new senior center or community center. It worries me a little bit about how much natural vegetation you'd have to take out to do that. And this site is so beautiful. It's just kind of a precious area. I don't know, but I'd hate to take it out for parking.
Again, I would say that this, again, this is, this is conceptual. And I think what we need to get back to is recognizing, is there a need? And then the second level below that then, and is this an appropriate place to put it? Or should it be in a different location? So again, I think, looking at the master plans, yeah, things, things have been built there which are not reflected on this. The boardwalk project was connecting the interior of the park down to the water that was built in 2015. We have the boathouse down there. So again, as things happen and plans, more detailed plans occur, I think the concept of connecting the interior of the park to the water was accomplished through the boardwalk rather than through that trail system, which is shown on the master plan. So the community center has come up, I, I think, as long as I can remember, the need for doing something. And I think when the Rhoady Park master plan was first developed, which I think was 2005, that's why it was put in that location. But for, as Julie has said, this may not be the best location based on what is currently at the park and what is also the community value.
Commissioner Olson, then Commissioner LaSalle?
Yeah, I, I would say I'd like to echo what Commissioner Messias was saying about the senior center in this area, just given that it's an existing location that we know does get used and there's a, a building there for it. It does make sense to me to continue to include that, prioritize that at this park. And the other thing I was wondering is, given the space constraints, if there is potential for, I don't know, phasing of redoing a portion of that parking lot and potentially doing a, like, underground parking area as part of the building, and then you could kind of phase it, and then potentially hold that area. That, that would not be a cheap project, but something along those lines, trying to put in almost like a parking garage. And instead of trying to get additional parking through building out a larger surface parking lot, doing it in combination with a senior center or renovated building in that area instead. I mean, that's interesting to me. And then, and then the other thing I wanted to note is, at a minimum, like wayfinding signage potentially from the trail, the shared use path and cycle track over 68th and Wanita, that bridge there. You can access the park by going down to the traffic light and taking a left there, but you can also go down and under the bridge there. And I'm not sure, is that public boat launch? Is that a public boat launch there? It is? Okay. I thought it was, but I wasn't 100% sure. I mean, ideally, I would like to see some sort of pathway or connection there. I think maybe that's been discussed in the past, and there were some reasons or some concerns people had with people, like, staying under the bridge there. But to me, just the more options, the better. And it seems like an obvious connection. It is, yeah. And so if you come off the cycle track, you can take a right off the cycle track into the boat launch, go over and under. And I've done that. It's not like you can't. It's just, it seems like something we're showing that, especially for people who don't who don't want to cross the roadway, and they would feel more comfortable going around and over, just making sure it's obvious. I'm probably getting a little too into the weeds, so I'm gonna stop.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Thank you. No, I'm good. Debbie beautifully said, much more eloquently, what I was gonna say about the master plan. And I think my views on blue-sky visioning versus capability fixing, I've shared them enough for tonight, so I'm good. Thanks.
Before we leave this park, as Julie talked about, we talked about multi-generational. One of the things that came out of the workshop was an interest and potential demand for a cultural facility. It would have a black box, it would have a history element, it would have art workshops and so on. And there's no reason that can't include senior facilities. Did you want to add anything to that? And Missy, if you're available, go ahead.
We looked at things that were expressed in those meetings at a facility around 28,000 square feet, which would include like an art gallery, lobby, kind of similar to what's here, a performance space to seat maybe 75 to maybe up to 100 people, prop, a prop building, you know, room, and prop storage, green room, and support spaces that go along with that. My list here, make sure I don't forget anything. Maybe a coffee shop and retail, kind of box office. So, and within that square footage, around 28,000 square feet, so just kind of ballpark. And that could then maybe even be combined with other things like senior center, historical museum, things that you want to try to put together for both synergy and economy of scale.
For those of us who are a little spatially challenged, can you think of an example of a building that is about that size? That we might all know?
I'm gonna take a wild guess and say the hangar might be close.
Okay.
Something of that nature.
Thank you. Commissioner Messias? Commissioner Messias?
Just because we're talking kind of dream big, did walkways and waterways come out of the pros plan? Is that where it started?
You mean the water walk?
No, no, no. Not necessarily. I mean, I think the pros plan and other community surveys had said there needed to be improved access to the water. And in 2015, there was a further community engagement process called Imagine Kenmore. And that's what came out about ideas for how to improve access to the water. There was also, at that time, the need for more connection. So then, I guess that's how walkways and walkways developed from there into the bond measure where you got the, the walkway improvement was the north-south connection from, you know, north border to south border, with those improvements that we've seen on the roads, the ped bike improvements. And then the walk, the waterway portion was the Rhode Dendron boardwalk, all the water access improvements at Log Boom Park, the beach, the picnic shelter, the trails, the habitat restoration. And then at Talakwadee, which is about six acres then, including the improvements for water access. So that's how it came about. It was, you know, it was in the pros plan for access to the water. And then it was just sort of recognized that to do that and do it in more of an impactful way, would the community then support a bond measure and be willing to pay for it? So when the bond measure was passed in 2016, I think it passed with 64% approval. So that's why that money was then used to build those facilities.
Okay.
That was probably a longer answer than what you asked, but...
No, that helps. You know, it's, it's, it's dream big here, right? You know, this is where that starts. Okay.
Debbie, you keep an incredible amount of information in your head. I am continually impressed by you. All right. I do, oh, I had a question, or I had one, oh. Commissioner Olson, your comment about wayfinding prompted me to remember that we had talked about wayfinding as an element of our downtown. We do our downtown, we had wanted to include wayfinding in. It would be fantastic to integrate those two kind of wayfinding projects. I think what you're talking about is a great idea. So if we could extend it, you know, I don't know technically how far out of the downtown Rhode Dendron Park is, but if we could think about like extending it down that way, and maybe even doing, highlighting our parks in our downtown wayfinding, too, would be amazing. Debbie, I see you have a comment.
This is a project which is going on in the city manager's office. There was a grant for three wayfinding signs.
Ah, so it's happening right now?
Yes. It's not, it's not gonna be the answer to all things. So three signs are going to help, but it's basically how, to get access, whether it's to downtown or to other facilities. I can get you more information on that. But I think in general, for wayfinding, I think it's probably something that you could put in the pros plan, or as a goal or something to say that it's important that as you develop the parks, the trails and things, that there is a good way for people to be able to, A, find them, know how they connect, whether it's a map or signage or something. So there could be something that goes in the, in the pros plan or in the pros element to address that need that, you know, you improve stuff, people need to know how to get there. So, yeah.
Yeah, I like that. Okay. And I think we can move on.
May I add? Sorry, I wanted to get back to your-
Yes, go ahead.
I did look it up. And the hangar, including the town square, is 24,000 square feet. So a little bit bigger than the building and plaza. Is that clear?
I'm not gonna try to pronounce that. Okay, good. This is a terrific park. I think that what we saw as a potential was to somehow, somehow run trail systems from this portion of the park on the north side of Swamp Creek, maybe in and around here, and maybe something on the south side of Swamp Creek that at some point in time would go across over to roadie, go over to the boat launch, go over to the wetlands. I think that one of the issues we heard was the limited parking capacity in this site. And if you're debating a cultural center or some kind of multi-generational facility, one option would be to put it down on 175th somewhere, and the parking capacity then would be available for all your waterfront improvements. And depending on where it's located, if you could then access the Burke Gilman Trail, then that's your distribution between all your different parking facilities when you have a major activity down on the waterfront. And we think that they, depending on how it's cited, that could be of interest to King County as a trailhead for the trail.
Commissioner Messias?
I think I've asked that before, because I know if you are outside of riding to Burke Gilman, and you were taking your car and parking there, your options are Log Boom or the street by Plywood Supply. And that's a tough one to navigate, and it doesn't feel safe, it doesn't feel appropriate. I would love to see a parking trailhead for people that come outside of the city to come to Burke Gilman, people from Kirkland, people from, people that don't have access, you know, want to go down the hill and go back up the hill. I think that is something that's just kind of missing, is such a huge piece of what we have in the city.
Now, that reminds me, Commissioner Messias, that I feel like Log Boom Park actually gets parked up with people riding on the Burke, and that hinders people who want to access the park from being able to access the park. So I think, thinking about, to make that kind of a broader topic of conversation for us, maybe we just think about the issue of parking down there in general, maybe from Talakwadee to Vlog Boom, and considering that people do like to access the Burke from there. Commissioner Olson, go ahead.
Point of information, slight question on this one. Is there plans for a, like, mid-block pedestrian crossing at the transit center and park and ride that would go over towards the trail?
I'm gonna defer that till we get to Chapter 5. And in Chapter 5, when we look at the off-road trail potentials, I think there are overpass and underpass issues, not necessarily feasible, but issues.
Yeah. I recall something around that from a while back, and just wanted to-
I think, I think what you're asking for is a different connection. You're asking for a connection from the park and ride at 73rd across to the Burke Gilman. And what is going to be discussed later is an overpass that's connecting the downtown, more in around 65th, across 522, 175th, to get to the other side.
Oh, okay. No, I was more like-
So I think you're asking for an additional, would it make sense for an additional crossing from there to the Burke Gilman?
I was more asking because I thought there was something in the works with Sound Transit previously, but I could be wrong on that. That could have ended, and I just wasn't sure if you had any other information on that.
I don't, I, well, I will, I will check, but I don't think there is a plan to do an overpass.
No, 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 this would have been at-grade crossing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will, let me check. Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, I was thinking of that just from like the parking standpoint, having the, like, connecting the park and ride to the trail, and potentially having that as an opportunity, especially on weekends when recreation demand is higher. And then in the future, as that area redevelops, there is the potential to also take advantage of that for commercial and other types of ways to get the city to connect more with the trail. I do like the idea of having something on the south side of 175th, because it's pretty, we've got a ton of parking on the north side, but the highway acts as a cliff that it makes it very difficult to traverse. And a lot of people just don't do it, understandably. Yeah. All right.
When we get to Chapter 5, there's some concepts for loops, to go back and forth across the highway at different points, and go further up into the northern part of the city. So those are certainly things that we've been thinking about. But I think we need to review the whole concept in Chapter 5.
Vice Chair Thompson?
One idea about the parking down by Log Boom. So I was wondering, just throwing it out there as an item, is on the south side of the trail, from 61st to nearly 68th, of having parallel parking, if we could have, but angled parking. And now, I know that that would probably take some engineering and that, but we do have space. That's one area where it's not a sensitive area. And, and I think we could double our parking along that street if we were lucky enough to do it right. So then, you were just talking about, oh. After the Passover, you said something. I forgot. I'm sorry. When it comes back, I'll ask.
Are there any other commissioner comments or questions on this park? Okay, I will just say before we move on to the next one, that I love the idea of more trails that connect the, what I call the eastern wild side of the park to the western, more developed side. And as we consider those, I would really like us to keep in mind and be mindful about keeping those trails far enough away from the rivers and the creek that we are still allowing for natural creek processes. That feels important to me. I know people like to be right by the water, but our shorelines are actually very ecologically sensitive, and they need space to function as we need them to function. So it's something I just would like us to be mindful about going forward. And I think we can move on to the next one.
This is Morelands Park. It's a pretty well-developed out park. There are two things we thought you might consider at some point in time. This is what we, this is a Little League field. It's about 220 feet from home plate to the outfield. So it's a Little League and Pinto League. Those are younger ages. One thing you could consider is going synthetic turf there. The other thing is whether you would consider putting pickleball courts in the northeast corner. That's the only high area, and that could be buffered from the rest of the park. Other than that, it does what it needs to do. There, if you look at the school grounds, it's their recess area, essentially. So we don't want to get in the way of that activity. Any comments on this part?
I'm seeing none, so let's, let's move on.
This is the boat launch. It's pretty straightforward. I think the only issue is you've got a pedestrian under crossing of the bridge that gets you to the boat launch. And I guess our point is, is continue on westward. Any comments on this?
I do actually have a question. This might be a question for Debbie and Todd. What is it like to, does the city have any coordination with WDFW around this space?
On the boat launch? The restroom that's at the boat launch, the city maintains that. So that is the coordination that we have currently.
Okay. And who owns, is the land under the bridge, is that owned by the city?
I want to say yes, because there is a, at least on the, on the Rhode Dendron Park side, there is a storage area, an outdoor storage area under the bridge, used by the boathouse users. On the other side, I don't know where the property line is, to be honest, so I'll have to ask. I'll have to ask the city engineer about that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think we can move on.
This is St. Edward State Park. You can see up in the top left is a map with the symbols. You can't see it at this scale. Of course, it indicates all their different amenities. It's primarily a walk-in trail park with viewpoints. There is a wedding grotto, there are the athletic fields, there is a playground facility, there are picnic facilities and so on. But basically, this is the nature of what State Parks wants to do, and all that they want to do on this site. They do allow the fields to be used, but they're not looking at making any improvements to them. They're really kind of seasonal activities.
Any commissioner comments on this one? Okay, seeing none, we can move on.
This is the Harbor Village Marina, and unfortunately, it doesn't, doesn't show the property lines. But as you come down your trail to your pier, and you extend on out to the waterfront, then that whole boardwalk there is by agreement access for you, and there is a public restroom on that. That's great. Works just fine. I would keep it.
Any commissioner comments on this one? Can you remind me, Tom, why this is on our list? I'm getting tired, so I need a reminder about why this private.
Because you have an agreement with them to use not only the restroom, but to continue the trail across their property to get to it.
Okay.
I think there's also an agreement for public access to the outer, I'm getting tired, too, outer dock, pier, thank you, pier area. So there is, if you go from Log Boom Park, across the stream there, onto the Marina property, one of those docks says public access.
Ah.
So that's why we're talking about it, because there is, when the Marina was built, when it, that was a long time ago, there was a requirement to allow public access along from, along one of the piers out to that outer breakwater.
Uh-huh. That makes me think of our-
And they open the gate at a certain hour and close it at a certain hour.
And they open the gate at a certain hour and close it at a certain hour.
That makes me think of our wayfinding project. I did not know that. And I would admit, and I've lived here for a long time. I would imagine a lot of people don't know that. Maybe the Marina doesn't want us to know that, but um, it would be nice if more people knew that so that we could enjoy that amenity. Oh, yes, let us take a five-minute break, so we will adjourn for five minutes. We'll come back at nine twelve. All right, it is nine twelve, so we are back in session. Are we on best year now?
Yep.
Okay, here we go. Any Commissioner comments or questions about? This one, Commissioner LaSalle?
Just, I I'm assuming that with the uncertainty tied to best year, we cannot necessarily discuss it at the moment. Then all good.
Well, let me give you, I would entertain the idea that you should consider purchasing the athletic fields. That's the only facility you have in the city.
I think that is something that we should not talk about.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, and Tom, just just so that we, it's not just because we're being awkward.
Although we are, yes.
There is a current application to amend the master plan, comp plan and zoning, so um we can't discuss purchase, whether it's for the city purchase or for any other partnerships at this time while we have an active um permit in place.
Okay.
And why actually, why don't we just skip this one for now? Let's go on to the Tolt.
Uh, the Tolt Pipeline Trail, I think the issue that that we've heard is it, it's got some steep grades in it. If it were in place, you could go from the Bothell Highway, even across Bothell Highway to Wayne Park and South. And if you were to go west, you could get all the way to Lake Forest Park's uh reservoir. It is up and down and steep, but not every trail has to be able to accommodate every kind of user. So I I think it's still a valuable um opportunity and something you should uh consider. Now, King County is the one you would have to negotiate with, and they've done um trails on top of their easements and other places. The question would be what kind of improvements, what kind of liability? And I'm sure that Debbie has a lot more information on that than I do.
Um, it's actually the city of Seattle, that it's their waterline trail. Um, so that's who we dealt with when the portion of trail was improved between Sixty-Eighth and Seventy Third.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Well, that's a good comment that that you made with regard to negotiate with the owning party there. Uh, Lake Forest Park did did that, and they have trails, uh and more than one. They have the trail on the pipeline to a certain extent, and then they have their own wells up on top. And they have uh trails that they built uh with volunteers primarily down to uh, well, it's really close to the town center there. So all of this is doable. It took quite a while to make it happen in a manner that was usable to the public that met a public standard, but uh there was tremendous interest. So your idea of connecting, well, of course, to Lake Forest Park, that's pretty easy, but they have connections uh further than that. And that reminds me of what I was going to, uh another Lake Forest Park story. So you know, there's the Interurban Trail, that's up north of us. And there's Burke Gilman Trail. Well, it took Lake Forest Park over ten years, I think close to twenty years to get a bicycle connector approved through their city from the from the um inter
Interurban?
Yeah, Interurban Trail all the way down to the Burke Gilman. It was a mess for a variety of reasons, but and it just has happened probably in the last, honest to God, last five to ten years. So that that whole concept that you had about connecting these trails, it's doable, but it's when there isn't a trail like the Tolt River Trail, it's horribly difficult for bicycles.
Sound Transit built trails, I mean, underneath their rail lines, so that that system runs all the way through shoreline. And it's just as easy to get over there and then jockey about uh that you go from there to the Interurban.
I just wanted, I just wanted to add that um all of these regional trail systems have been on everybody's planning radar for over twenty years, thirty years. And most jurisdictions are just slowly building piece by piece to try to finally make those connections. You know, everything from starting with the Burke Gilman to the Cedar River Trail and going into Maple Valley from from Renton. I actually did work on that, uh and that was a eight-year uh three-phase project, getting, you know, just from the Renton city limits. So eh there there are a lot of um, it's a lot of commitment and long-term, long-term thinking. But the, but, but there is a huge network throughout Washington that everyone's working toward, so.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, I I did want to mention that if it is ever at a point where it can connect up to that water ability over in Lake Forest Park in that area, one Ninety-Fifth, you take that to Ballenger and that potentially with some improvements in that area towards one Eighty-Fifth, that's the light rail line which connects you with that trail as well. That's approximately three miles from downtown Kenmore along the Tolt Pipeline versus the closest dedicated pedestrian and bike access that we currently have to light rail is about ten miles. Um, so really difficult, creates our challenge. This would be decades to make something like that happen, I think. And that's assuming that it's not just a a trail, um which I think could potentially be done sooner and maybe is something that we could look at as like an interim option, is trying to just improve the existing hiking options and um use of some of those spaces in the meantime, especially for areas that are less constrained by environmentally sensitive features, things like that. Um, potentially even looking at improvements on roadways like, uh, I think it's one Ninety-Fifth by like Northlake Church and some of those areas. We've got like a painted bike or painted walking area there, but potentially putting in, like extending the trail up that hill and some over in those areas would be something um that that makes sense to me, maybe trying to identify as part of a planning effort. Where can we get the most value from improving this network and expanding the network in the near term? And then what are going to be the longer, harder pushes? And is it worth it? Um, and maybe it's not, but I think that even just, you know, doubling the length of the Tolt Pipeline Trail that we currently have on one Eighty-Fifth, um connecting it over toward around towards Eightieth, even though that's only in the city, I still think that would provide a lot of value because it's a dedicated, separate access and it's going to get a different type of use than bike lanes oftentimes will.
Well, Chris, just think, excuse me, just think, you're so young that before, you'll see this before you retire, but probably after I'm dead.
Hopefully, we'll see.
Do you have anything else there, Commissioner Olson?
Um, no, no, that's it, um except for the shameless plug about wanting a bridge over Sixty First at one Eighty-Fifth. But that's it, I'm not too serious about that option.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay, so on this one, I I do have two questions slash comments. One is um I was actually just walking on the Tolt recently over close to Lake Forest Park, and there was a sign that said no motorized vehicles, which is fine, but it did make me think about the fact that a lot of e-bikes are more popular now and little e-scooters and things like that. So as we're thinking about trails and how people will use them and what Seattle, for example, who owns the Tolt might allow or not allow, I I think we we should probably think about all these things as we're thinking about the Tolt. Yes, I don't have any solutions right now at nine twenty-two on that, but and then my other comment is that I know that this is a hard one because I know that there are trade-offs. Um, but we did have a pretty robust conversation on Planning Commission about improvements to the Tolt Pipeline Trail through the Swamp Creek Wetland. And we actually ended up taking it out of our comprehensive plan um to preserve the ability for that to act as a wildlife habitat corridor um and concerns about putting any kind of like um infrastructure in there that might act as another barrier for north-south migration for larger mammals who are not human. Um, that said, I really, really am interested and intrigued by something Commissioner Olson, what you said about putting more lanes on one Eighty-Fifth, that made me think about, there's a in Seattle, they have neighborhood bike routes. Is there a, is it a program? Do you know what I'm talking about? Neighborhood greenways, um where they have kind of established, I guess, systems for bikes, and I wonder if we could start to think about those as connectors to some of the places where maybe bikes aren't, couldn't be on the Tolt if because the grade is too steep right now or for other reasons, that we could start to kind of connect them on surface streets. I know that's not as, again, trade-offs, that's not as great from a safety perspective if we have to share the road with cars. Um, but maybe we could start to think about making connections in that way as well. Better than nothing, yeah. Okay, and with that, I think we can move on to the next one.
Um, before you do, e-bikes and and scooters and so on, cities have treated them differently. In some cases, the Interurban Trail allows them, uh some jurisdictions have not. So I wouldn't rule them in or out till you have time to evaluate them. Um, Burke Gilman Trail. I know it's a regional trail, but I would, in Kenmore, I would consider that your main connection between your water fronts and um parallel in Hundred Seventy-Fifth and tie in your parking capacity and your future facilities off of that corridor. There are two underpasses, so you avoid all kinds of uh surface traffic issues. So it'd be very easy to connect to the Burke Gilman and distribute to Log Boom or to uh
Fire?
Talquidi's uh during major events. So consider it your local asset. It's it's both regional and local.
Commissioner Missius?
Um, I am also echoing the connection here. If you come down north on one Needa Drive and dump out there at the bottom, getting to either side of those overpasses at Burke Gilman is like either froggering five twenty-two or going down the Plywood Supply or going down the back road of Log Boom. It is horribly inaccessible and I can see kids. And I can see kids with bikes and families all the time. And it is, it feels like such an asset for us that we are just not utilizing that connection. And getting across from 522 on going across that side is just terrifying at best. So I would advocate for a little more focus in trying to get people on the trail safely and accessibly.
Commissioner Olson?
Agree, and especially at 68th in particular. And it's a really challenging issue, frankly, having looked at that. I think there's also potentially some options that we could at least do in the interim to make it somewhat better, especially around kind of the bus stops, some of those areas. And considering that in the long run, I do know there's some challenges with ped bridges and ped tunnels in these areas as well. So one thing, I think I brought it up earlier, but not necessarily ruling out at-grade pedestrian crossings similar to like the pedestrian refuge islands that we see in Bothell. I know that can be difficult from like a traffic perspective or vehicle traffic perspective, but it's something that I think is more attainable and feasible and lower cost. It's got a much, it's a much easier burden to lift in terms of technical difficulty and cost than a pedestrian bridge or tunnel is going to be, or lowering the roadway there. Not to say that it's easy. Yeah, anyways, I'll leave it at that.
I will say I agree with Commissioner Missias and Commissioner Olson about access to the Burke. It is incredibly difficult to access for pedestrians or people who are on bikes or rolling. And I think it would behoove us to consider how far back that's happening on our roadways. Like I think that it starts to be a problem all the way at Simons, approaching from the south, which is pretty far. And then I don't know, I think in the, on the north end, it probably is pretty, it's probably happening closer to 522. But I think considering like the whole area where the problems may be occurring will help us solve them better. And then with that, I think that is it.
Since Missy Smith has been sitting there very patiently, did you want to add anything about the Cultural Center?
No, it just seemed like a very opportune moment to begin thinking about that when we talked to the different organizations that are borrowing, renting space. Like, you know, they don't have homes, they don't have offices. They, they are all just making it work. And it seems to be working well for them while they make it work. They're doing a great job with what they've got. But it would, this seems like an opportunity for them to be able to maybe think about coming together in a space.
Ms. Olson?
I think that was brought up around Rhododendron earlier, is that correct? As one of the potential sites for that and potentially something combined with what's currently the senior center. Not like trying to displace seniors, but expand how that could be used. I really like that idea. One thing I would like to see, which I think could be challenging with the trees there, is trying to potentially have a building or some sort of frontage towards Simons and northeast 170th, I think, at Simons. Just to pull people in, I think there's a development that happened across the street, potentially like crossing some other improvements as well with that to kind of start building that area up too. But I personally think that it's a good space to use it. There's already interior space. And it does appear to me that there's some locations closer to the field and like a basketball area that maybe could be located somewhere else to make use of that existing parking lot for, for that type of use. And I think Commissioner Missias' point about limited interior indoor space as well.
Yeah, just clarify one point. I think having the senior center in Rhododendron works in terms of parking. Having the cultural center combined with that would be too much. It by itself, as we described, it would be about 100 parking spots because it's an assembly type space. So you, you kind of think about the senior center by itself, potentially in that park or combining it with other programs in an area where there's more parking for all of those, you know, multiple uses.
Mr. Thompson?
Did you look into the Kenmore Community Center?
I've not gone inside. I've looked at pictures online and I've driven by it, but I didn't have access to it.
That is another property that kind of could be on a list somewhere.
Exactly. And yeah, good connection.
Commissioner Missias?
I have a lot of questions tonight, I'm sorry. I don't know if I'm fully tracking, one of the topics we talked about was swapping. Like we, the discussion around Wallace Park swap for ball fields. I don't know if I'm fully tracking what that swap looks like. Are we removing the ball fields from Wallace or swapping? Like, can we just go back to that for a quick second? Because I don't know if I'm fully tracking that. And then on the Cultural Center, I'm just wondering, would a, would an area like across from the hangar, since we own that lot, since we own that area anyway, would that be appropriately sized for something like that? Okay.
Two questions. The last one, sure, hangar, any property in and around that area. I think the question would be if you combine the cultural idea with other uses, then you've got to have enough capacity within the, within the property to do that. An advantage, I think the one reason we thought about putting it down around 175th and the Burke-Gilman Trail is that it could double duty. When you're not in prime peak demand for whatever it is you put in that facility, you can use it for something else. For Wallace Swamp Creek Park, that's not really a ball field up there. That was, I think, inherited property. What we're saying is that's an area you could put active facilities in, but only by swapping a compare, with it, swapping it with a comparable piece to meet the Conservation Futures requirement. And we know that's been done, we know, but it has to be a good swap. You just can't go say, "We want it for it or somewhere else." Enlarging the existing park would be the easiest way to do it. But otherwise, you've kind of, you're kind of, you're so cramped on having spaces for active recreation. That's something worth considering.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
One thing I wonder if it's worth considering. We know that we have already zoned, I'm going outside of the Prose Plan here because I think, I think we have to sometimes look at some of our other planning. We have a significant amount of our zoning in the city now devoted to multipurpose, multifamily housing, which has retail offices on the first two floors. But one of the things I think we know is an outstanding trend is that retail is not really going very far. And we haven't had very much, cities anywhere have had very much uptake on developments that require having retail or office on the first two floors. Might it be an option to develop some of that space to make it an option to developers to use that space for community use, community center or senior center?
Yes.
At the same time, thank you. And in the same time, I think we also have already begun to think about one of the uses for some of the fees we might be able to collect from new development, similar to what we've done to affordable housing, to have it in lieu of, or have a simpler, where we could begin to tap into some of that funding or offering a additional development capacity in return for using those first two floors for community space.
A good prototype is PULUP. They developed, I don't know, I can't remember whose idea was it first, the private developer or the city. And they put smaller apartment units on top of their, their community center facility. And it made it, made the private development more feasible. And I think that that's certainly, you should certainly consider that as an approach that you should be doing for these new facilities.
Back to the question about Wallace and the ball field. Can you say more about why you are making that recommendation? Is it based on one of the old master plans? No, Wallace doesn't have a master plan, does it? It was a concept?
It has a concept.
It has a concept, okay.
And it did have a ball field in that area, which was very controversial. As you can imagine. So again, it's a concept, the feasibility and to place a ball field at Wallace Swamp Creek is challenging, I would say. And as Tom said, for any active use, the swap there would be, if you wanted to do an active use in Wallace Swamp Creek, whether it was a ball field or something else, you would have to buy equivalent property elsewhere. And that happened at Toluquidys Park. So for Toluquidys Park, again, how that park was acquired, funding by King County, was limiting active use. So to allow things like the, the access to the water there, more of an active use, the city had to purchase equivalent land somewhere else to allow that to happen. It's, it can be done. It's not an easy process to get through.
Does the ball field idea at Wallace being advanced as a concept for us to actively consider in this day and age right now? No.
No.
Okay.
We're not looking at a ball field there. But if you were to do any kind of active facilities there, it should be of a controlled scope, so it doesn't overpower the park. Pickleball courts would work, so it's sports courts as an option.
Okay, I will note for the record that that area is incredibly wet seasonally because it is a wetland. Anything else? All right, thank you so very much, Tom and team, for the conversation tonight. It was nice to meet the, the rest of you. And Debbie and Todd, do we have? Yes, and our Missy online, thank you for being here. And do we have next steps that you would like to do?
As I mentioned at the last week's meeting, just kind of next step. So you have a couple of weeks off here. And then we'll reconvene on August 26th and then again on September 2nd. So those will be our next two Prose check-in meetings, so, August 26th.
You inadvertently got Chapter Five. That is a very, very rough draft. A week before the 26th, you'll probably get an updated version of that.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? All right, well, have a happy two-week break, everyone. Thank you, Debbie and Todd, for all of your hard work and upon the Prose Plan. We appreciate you. And with nothing else to come before us, this meeting is adjourned at 9:40.